You know, how's it going?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Again, after what you did.
Yes, sir.
If we could all stand for prayer, main standard for the evening.
Praise God. Heavenly Father, we thank you again for this day. We thank you for your many, many blessings in life. We thank you for just watching over us and being with us. Lord, we ask a special blessing upon our first responders, each and every one, and we pray that you'll watch over them, protect them, Lord, and just give them a safe day. We ask you to be with our employees at the courthouse. We ask you to be with them and give them a safe day, especially in the way this world's going, Lord, we just ask for their protection. Now, Lord, we ask for your knowledge and wisdom in making the proper decisions, and we give you the glory, Father, in Jesus' name. So, the flag?
My friends and citizens, salute the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, maybe. President, we have a room full. It's great. The only issue is when we have a room full, that means there's an issue. Someone's not happy.
You think so? Undoubtedly.
So, that's a separate about that. You asked for approval of the agenda.
The only change was I did put a note on the next meeting, but I'm not done budget revision, and then adding Mark or Milk Burger, not a coffee, are the only two changes.
Okay, alright. We have AJ here. Do you wanna?
Go ahead. I move, we shift.
No.
I move, we shift. I second that.
Okay, you have a report you wanna give us now, or?
Uh, yeah, real quick, as far as health department goes, we were supposed to get the local unit yesterday when they were getting ready to do their, go through their final check before they shipped it. They didn't find a glitch. They're fixing it. So, but it's, we should have it any time.
The reason I called you, oh, gotta hold you, is because Reaching A had it for next month, when I had the meeting the other day, and I told him, I said, so it should be in Monday, or whether it comes in a lot. Let me know when it comes here, cuz I wanna let her know.
Yeah, oh, I mean, I'll definitely let her know as far as that, and then I've already talked with a local company as far as before we get it out to, you know, going, I wanna get it wrapped and get it done.
Yeah.
That way, it's, you know, if we don't take it out, something happens to them. So, but, that's one of two. As far as building, I've checked on that a couple different times. As far as managing and the funding through Ursa, they, they just keep saying that it's gonna be released on the 30th. They haven't given us any additional things in, in front of it, so 30th is coming real quick. So, we, we should know something, I would say, within the next week, and as soon as we do, we can put it out, and, you know, that's been the whole of this thing at this point. Um, trying to think of anything else. Uh, we're going into schools, giving flu shots right now for students and for, uh, it's bad, you know. Of course, I get approval for the, and install that kind of stuff prior. Other than that, uh, we celebrated the 100th anniversary of the West Virginia Public Health Association, uh, just this past week. And then I was recognized, not because it's me, but I was recognized for 25 years of service here.
Congratulations.
It's hard to believe I was there for quarter of the.
Maybe you're old.
Yes. Other than that, we're just keeping busy at this point.
And also, just to add, thanks for letting them girls come down, and ladies come down, other than get the flu shots. And they would love to be down there Friday at 12 o'clock, to just.
Okay, that's fine. He can do whatever we gotta do, so.
Do you, do you have a design for the wrap?
I got an idea, you know, I've got an idea of work. So, I've gotta talk to the gentleman, and he's supposed to be able to call here in the next couple of days, and I've already got the convention, so they can go ahead and start working on getting it, so that way, as soon as I can get it, I can get it up to go. And then, we've got like a van out there, uh, that was, the state had gotten through COVID, that even one of the ones that have it, uh, which is about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, testing ban that we can use for multiple things, but we can't move it right now because they aren't insuring it, and it's not under license, so it's literally just sitting there, and we're just waiting.
So, will we have to insure it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's, I mean, we can use it, I mean, if anybody else needs to use it for something, you know, even if the Sheriff's Department needs to use it, utilize it, or, uh, whatever, uh, it's got a generator on it, and, I mean, you can actually, uh, do a lot of things with it, so. But that's all I had at this point.
So, we'll get Liz and get some of this in the paper?
Yeah.
For public matters that we're.
Yeah.
Doing something.
Oh, yeah. I always keep Liz up in the meeting, I have stuff going on anyway.
Liz, did you call the Imperial family?
Uh, Barbara has talked into him. She's working on.
That's a, that's amazing. We had a young man, for, for you that don't know this, we had a young man from this area, went to Kaiser High School, went to our church. He went to Tenth State College, went on to Western University, he works for, it's down in Raleigh, Durham, North Carolina, down there now. He's, he's a photographer. And if you get on Mike Imperial, uh, Facebook page, he took a picture, his son, Brian, dude, took a picture, sent it in, and he won first place over fifty-some countries. He's over, I think he's back from London yesterday, I think he came back. Nice young man. And that is amazing. Fifty-some countries he won first place over, and he's right here from Kaiser, Mineral County.
I wanna read a short letter from Governor Jim Justice, dealing with the grant that we just received for the Sheriff's Department. Dear Commission, congratulations on the local economic development assistant grant you have been awarded by the West Virginia House of Delegates. Delegate Rick Hillbranding was behind all this. Please find a check enclosed for $4,000 requested by the West Virginia House of Delegates to be used to purchase eight mini PCs for the Sheriff's Patrol Officers. If you should have any questions, comments, or concerns related to your grant, please contact West Virginia House of Delegates Finance Committee. Thank you for your commitment to doing a great work for the state of West Virginia, and sincerely, signed, Jim Justice, Governor of West Virginia. So, I wanna thank Rick Hillbrand, he was, he was responsible for this grant. We appreciate it so much. And JK. Sorry, JK, I didn't hear you. You're used to sitting in the background and not receiving any of it. Accolades, okay, uh, minutes of the previous meeting, and then we'll jump into. Yeah. And I prove that also. Yeah, let's, let's hold on until the end of the meeting, so we don't have to, um, everybody else. Okay, um, are you expecting anyone else here, Mark? Do you mind if we move you up, and that way you don't have to wait for the whole meeting, cuz I'm sure you have more important things to do than sit here and listen to. If you would like to, um, come up and give your report, this is Margaret, Margaret Malmberger, she's, uh, works with four inch extension and several other programs in the.
So, are, just a kind of quick, um, summer update. We had a really good and busy summer. Uh, we offered some outstanding county camp programs that can't make it, and our four H team leaders played a really active role in leading and teaching and helping them to be successful parents. Uh, we have a real important collaboration with Mineral County Schools and the Mineral County Family Resource Network, um, and offering Energy Express every summer, and we have been doing that 25-plus years, right, you know, which is amazing for any type of collaboration, they're normally not, but that's just. And we were able to serve about, I don't know, 88 children from both Frankfurt and Kaiser side of the county, and we were able to provide breakfast and lunch, and lots of reading and literacy bridge activities, and it went really, really well. Our county fair program was also, uh, was a big partnership with the FFA, Mineral County Technical Center, and that went well for all of our, all of our youth that involved with that. Uh, also, thanks to, in part, part of is our active four H team year program, but part of it is, uh, Richard and Bruce Jean Keller established a scholarship fund that helps us get, uh, our youth to state camps, and through that, finally got about forty youth from Mineral County to different state camps at Jackson's Mill, which just broadens their horizons, gets them a chance to meet other youth from across the state, and then helps them, you know, build confidence that they can, you know, handle themselves in a different situation. Yeah, so those are just the highlights for the summer, and then I also wanted to, I, I, we are aware that Stacy Huffman accepted the position with Mineral County Schools. Um, it was really enjoyable working with her, so, um, we definitely miss her, but just to kind of give you, it's also good for Mineral County Schools to have her, uh, and that was the community coordinator, so she's still being a part of, of, uh, our Mineral County community. But just to let you know where we are with West Virginia University, uh, when an extension agent position becomes vacant, we have to submit a request to get the process started. The process is slow, much slower than we would like for it to be. I'm hopeful, really hope we can have someone in by springtime. Um, right now, the request has been submitted to, um, Dana Tealies and Ronnie Helen Dollar, who's chair of the acquisition. Uh, it will be, or he's the supervisor, and, um, so that has been started. The update right now is there's several other positions, they're in the process of filling for first within the next couple of months. Once those are filled, they'll move forward with this one. But we will have to, uh, I'll have to regularly be in touch with them to remind them and to keep Mineral County in, in front. Uh, once the position is posted, um, we'll let you all know, and then, um, during the final part of the process, the, uh, our extension service committee, which one of the, one of you, it will be the representative, um, will actually come to the final interview with the candidates. So, I'll just keep you all updated as that goes, but we're anxious, you know, to the decision. So, I guess, any questions?
STEM Festival next year?
Um, I need to meet here with Tom Tomic College to see, so I'll be able to let you all know where they are. It really is gonna depend upon how many people are able to come together to make it happen. So, yeah, it's, it's a collaborative, and it requires about ten different people on the same page to be able to make it happen. Yeah, Tomic State and WBU had a lot going on, uh, the past year, uh, with reorganizing, so it's probably really gonna be whether or not they feel like they've got the manpower.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you for your service. Hard work. Thank you.
It's busy.
We'll just move into, uh, town originally.
Yeah. We have an appointment for 9:30 for the town originally, but if you all would like to present your case now, is everybody here expecting someone else?
Yep.
Anyone else coming? Yeah, I know. I mean, with what are you gonna do? Well, she's right, they were putting an agenda, so it's all one of the problems, sitting on, like, missing. Is my holding off for just a little while? I mean, Lauren's right, we do have an agenda, we're twisted to 9:30, if anyone else wants to come and, enter in or complain, and we jump ahead, might be upset. So, we got a couple more things to do, and then we'll, that's okay. Okay, let's go to correspondence, um, so the chair. This is Sheriff's monthly report we did through, basically, many talks about finances. Oh, no.
We could get the legislators up there.
Yeah. It would be great. He did. For fourteen thousand, they can see a weapon, they would tap into this for something. I've often said this job would be perfect if we got all the money that you needed. Then the most problem would be, most of the problem you wouldn't have, yeah. All kind of funding. Okay, uh, letter from Charles Smith, letter of resignation as representative for the Kaiser MS on the amnesty authority. Uh, I hereby, I'm hereby resigned from my position as Kaiser MS representative with Mineral County Amnesty Authority effective 9/10/24, Sancho.
Oh, then. He's still running with Kaiser, I think that.
Okay, and then Kaiser MS sent us three names. Possible consideration for their representative on the amnesty authority. Michelle Grove, Christina Clunes, and Gala Staringer. Then we reached the letter for Tucker County. I mean, the foundation, thank you, dear commission, thank you for your gift of $1,500 in support of the Run for the Race sponsor. Your generous donation support is appreciated. Signed, Mike Moore, Chief Financial Officer for Tucker County Foundation. Okay, we're down to, um, old business, portion appointments. We represent the Patrick in that.
Yep.
Yeah, but she's been in it a long time.
She had, runs.
Oh, yeah. I prove that also.
Okay.
In here too, it says, uh, verification charter of planning commission.
Yeah.
So, back in January of 2023, there, we renewed some of the board members, but, um, I'm not sure how it would miss in conversation, but they actually recommended, and what you see is an email from AJ from January 10th to 2023. Um, they, um, they changed, made some changes to their bylaws, and what he was actually asking was not actually just to reappoint the individuals, but he actually wanted to rearrange their terms. And that portion was not done. The members were approved, but their terms were not altered. The, this was his recommendations from Berdolph, Mark, 26 Wagner, 25 Frederick, 26, and then our commissioner. What you see attached then is the terms as we approved them, and you'll see the letter that I sent to the planning commission, um, as the terms were, not as they were requesting. So, they had a meeting the other day, and we were questioning whose term was to expire, and their information wasn't matching my information, and we went back to this email from January 23, where they requested that those terms be changed.
Okay, to what?
The first page, we can compare.
But, uh, Cloud is expired.
Right, so Berdolph was to expire, but then, we, this was in January, and then in July, we reappointed him to a new three-year term. So, he would actually be.
Twenty-seven.
Yes. So, Cloud, twenty-seven, Lark, which is now Denny, would be twenty-five, Wagner would be twenty-five, Frederick would be twenty-six.
So, they only really don't want changing, it's quite rare.
No, these are all different from what they currently are. They wanted to rearrange everybody's terms.
Okay, but from just what you have written down, the only thing different is Cloud 20-20. You have Cloud 24.
They're all different from what we have.
Right.
If you turn two more pages, that's what we have.
Right.
So, we have Lark at 24, Lark is supposed to be 25, we have Wagner at 24, which would be 27, they had her expired at 25. So, they were, they're requesting to rearrange their whole board.
There's one correction needs to be made on there. Dave Frederick is no longer in, in Knobby Road, he's in, he's in County.
Okay. That changed his, is he a one or two?
I think he may go.
He's a two now.
He may go to two.
That's okay, because we had two and one, two and three, and one and two, so you can still have two and two. You just can't have one and three in them.
Okay, so that's, Cloud Burlock expiring 27, Jeff Lark expiring 25, Lisa Wagner expiring 25, Dave Frederick expiring, expiring 26, and Dutch.
Would actually be December 31st, that change, well, that's planned down, that changes actually.
But, and actually, Jeff Lark is now with Denny. And Jeff Lark is on. Danny, yes, I said.
It's hard to pronounce.
Danny can help with that.
Okay.
If you wanna make a motion to approve these recommendations from January 23, is to realign the planning commission board members.
I'll make a motion as such. I'll second, and I prove that also. Okay. Do you have any update on?
I laid a, um, the ceremony, uh, the invitation is on the one side, and the actual schedule for the dedication is on the other side.
This coming Friday, there's gonna be a dedication for the Davis White Law Enforcement Building, gonna be ribbon cutting dedication. It starts at noon, you're all invited. It's gonna be down on East Street in front of the law enforcement building. It's right across from the courthouse. Very beautiful now. Uh, you get a tour of the place, it's, it's state of the art. It's gonna be great for law enforcement in the area for years to come. Ask that to our county, it's, it's, it's really great. If any of yous drop by, take a look at it. They just put up the signage last week, one day. So, anyhow, Friday, noon.
If it's raining, we'll move it inside up to the bathroom room.
Right.
Uh, and then we'll come back down and do the ribbon cutting.
It's not supposed to rain.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other updates? Uh, we have a, we're to the Renon Park. Bike trail, Carbondale Tunnel.
I have on my schedule. I don't have that on my agenda. Was that Adam?
No, it's just always.
I have a couple of things before that for Luke. One is the concrete issue in front of me.
Right.
And he just put to you all about that, I think.
He did.
If you want me to talk about that at all.
Sure. Just briefly. You don't have to go into details, but.
Okay, uh, this is the concrete in front of the judicial annex, getting re-modeled. Was gonna be torn out and replaced. There are three invoices here, um, and there'll be one more invoice for the remainder of the path after the sewer and water is completed. The one is, one invoice is for sixteen thousand two seventy-five, for, um, seventy percent of the job needs a bit of rework. They have said they will try to fix the piece that is off level soon, and that is your decision whether you all wanna go ahead and pay it, pay half, pay none of it, until they have finished the work that they've done, or they've started.
My thinking is pay none. Some of this, the, are, some of this, the contractor, I think, has been some of this is responsible. I think we initially intended the scope of the project.
For this larger piece, that's part of the.
Part of the project, right?
We have to pay, uh, the, the rich, that sixteen thousand, in addition to, there was a piece that they are also doing, one of the other invoices that would be part of the rich.
Yeah, there's two other invoices, one's for $2,000, um, for pouring, uh, let's see, that one hadn't finished the rest of the side of the building for two thousand since they were already there, and then the final invoice for forty-three hundred, um, Luke did not know about that one until after the work was done, and he was given the invoice. Jared, you know, I told them to go ahead and do the work, and, um, and to do this because it was going to be required for upgrades on the building. He didn't have enough power knowledge, Luke did it, um, until after it was complete, and he would have called to confirm there.
And that's, okay, part of that's with the scope of the project. So, the first invoice for seventeen, part of that needs rework. I would like to make a motion to pay half of that invoice. Then the second invoice for two thousand, I would like to make a motion to pay that complete invoice, and then the last invoice, we don't pay. Uh, then needs forward as fair chance for them to pay.
And those are all from Nelson Concrete?
Yeah.
Yes.
And to clarify, the first one, once they fix that area that needs fixed, then they can get the other half.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, and then the projects, uh, we've reached out to Senator Manions' appropriations team twice to see if we are advancing for the Carbondale Tunnel. We still haven't received an answer for it. Obviously, we know that we'll still have an ad today, but we're concerned for that. The update on the, uh, CDBGCV Health Department Facility Project, the local unit, uh, we have a request for a paydown, which is a payment drawdown. I think this is the new one, which is four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-six.
This is the second half of the local unit, so we already paid two hundred and thirty-two, one eighty-eight, so we're gonna be, take this drawdown, we can thirty-two, one eighty-eight, this drawdown number two.
For the local unit.
Now, this is for the building, this is drawdown number eleven for the building, this amount of drawdowns, three thousand four hundred and fifty-nine, sixty, or.
For what?
For the health department, drawdown. With the test stuff, really. So, there's two different drawdowns.
I mean, what does it pay for? They haven't done anything yet other than engineering cost.
That's what it is. Look through, you'll see the invoices.
This, um, this drawdown, I goes back to the morning, it's someone that you had laid on table, it's, yeah, uh, no, that's not what I'm looking at, but yes, that is what it is, but that's not the one I actually have looking at.
So, do we have one other than two of eleven? Cause I had the one for, I had payment eleven drawdown for the three thousand four hundred and fifty-nine, I had it on the agenda. This number two was laying on the desk when I came in. This is the second half of the local unit because it's supposed, it was supposed to be here yesterday.
This is what I gave you this morning, yes, a copy, yes, this is from the local unit, yeah, we had a half, another one, I think they had this two. Okay, and then I got this from. And then I got this in flying, this is. I got one yesterday, it would be sent me on a copy, and then I'll take the one. Okay, so that's. Needs, this was an addition, I think, to what this one is, but this needs, but those need to be signed, I think, at the back. Okay.
But now that it, you have to pay the other half, which is the two hundred thirty two thousand one hundred eighty eight. That's drawdown number two. Are you going to approve that one?
Well, we won't have that on our agenda.
We have it on the, the CB. As.
Or.
That's why we leave it on there. I think CBGC.
It's just not specif- it's just not specified as a drawdown payment, other than the line for region eight. I mean, does it have to be on the agenda?
It is on the agenda. It is on the agenda. I mean, because it would carry that over, that CBVDCV updates just for that purpose, when he's drawdown.
What was that?
Two thirty two one eighty eight.
Can we put that in the same motion?
No, except for once.
I'll make a motion for the drawdown number eleven, three thousand four hundred fifty nine eighty seven. So that goes to region eight.
Yes, and the test that.
But that region eight gets two thousand.
Yeah, well, protesta gets four fifty. Yeah, right. Three thousand nine dollars, nation seven cents, gives region eight, four hundred fifty gives to protesta. I'll make a motion to pay the two hundred thirty two thousand one hundred eighty dollars. What's the balance on that?
That is the balance.
Okay, that'll pay it all.
Yeah, because it was four hundred. Four hundred seventy thousand, seventy six dollars. Oh, excuse me, no. Oh, that fifteen thousand is the other invoice you have then. And then that was fifteen thousand for administration, which is region eight. So Dutch made the motion on number eleven, but Roger, you didn't second, you second? Okay, Roger made a motion on number two, but Dutch, you second?
Yeah, sir.
Okay.
Hey, do you have any update on everybody funding? I know you've had.
Yes, do. Get our head is up. Okay, so we'll start off with. We met yesterday with, there was five applicants. And we met yesterday with three of them. We felt three of them was worthy, and I'll get into why the other two went on, but. We met with three of them yesterday and interviewed them, the Merrill County First Committee did. One of those was the three D recovery, the family for life church of God is Deepmont. Met with two of the guys there. And. What? They have applied for this time, which before they just wanted that house, a large jump of change and we rejected them. So they applied again. And so what they're looking for is they need a vehicle to transport people that want to come to their meetings or want to go to recovery centers. And we went through with them. One issue we had was we was concerned about their legality. So they do everything under the Church of God, and through the Church of God, they use the non-profit status of the Nationwide Church of God. And because of how they have everything set up. They do not have to do any reporting to any state or federal agencies. Because of how they fall under the umbrella in church of God. So. We discussed with them in detail and we have come up with a suggestion, a recommendation for the commissioners. That we help them out with a vehicle. We recommend that we cap it off at twenty thousand dollars. And they will provide an invoice. They will find a vehicle, provide an invoice. And the account will pay again up to twenty thousand dollars. And they will. We could either pay the, pay the church or pay the invoice to the, to the dealership or whatever they buy it. Probably need to pay them and then they can pay for the, pay for the vehicle. They can also submit an invoice for also suggest, submit, then be able to submit an invoice, part of the twenty thousand to pay for insurance, any maintenance needs, fuel receipts, reimbursement for fuel receipts again, once we get up to twenty thousand dollars. Before we do that, we recommend that they sign a contract, of course, and we'll, and I'll work with Luke on adjusting what we approved this made up so that it really fits to them that this vehicle want to be used for mineral county residents. They will keep a complete log of every mile this vehicle travels. So anytime it leaves the area or anytime it leaves up there, anytime anybody's moving it around, there will be a log sheet that they will keep with us up to a year. Or up, yeah, at least a year. But we will, they will keep this log sheet every mile, how many people and an approximate address. We don't want their names or actual address, but you know. Picked up a central county resident from Kaiser, hauling them to a rehab place, wherever. So that's what we are recommending. And we will reimburse them for the cost of the vehicle, the insurance, any maintenance and any fuel. Up to twenty thousand dollars. And but it will be one of. I, I realize a big cost of the vehicle. They don't have the money to go out and buy the vehicle and reimburse them. So once they provide an invoice for a vehicle they have found, we'll have to front them up the money to, to pay for the vehicle. That would be our recommendation. And a couple of people here, Jason and Alene, you all agree with with what I've said?
Wizard, what about the other two?
Do you want me to do all of them, or you want me to just do one each, each one individually?
Yeah. Just the other two. Because you only, you only took three out of the five.
Yes.
Yeah, we don't, we don't worry about the other two. But then it's up to one year.
Yeah, one year. Yeah, they'll, they'll be everything up to one year. Part of that, part of that contract too, that David signed has in there that if they misuse, if there's a misuse of the vehicle or something else happens, that they would, they'll have to, they'll have to reimburse the county. Reimburse back the opioid fund, the money that, that they've been given.
Okay. And who are the other two?
Okay, the other one that we recommend approval is West Virginia Extension Service, which Margaret was here earlier. I should have had her explain a little bit. She came to us with a record. They have a, it's called a Health Rocks Program. And Self Rocks Program, they take four H students. Take the older ones. They go through a training to become leaders. And yeah, there's a, there's a pamphlet on it. They take a, teach them to be leaders and then they, these, these older students that are leaders will then teach the fifth and sixth grade students. And become leaders and basically like mentors to them. They have found that parents trying to talk to kids, the kids kind of shut the parents out because, just because we're adults and that kind of thing. But the older kids, they seem to listen and accept older kids better than what they, what they do to the adults. They, she did it as a pilot program last year. And it worked out really well. This year she wants to expand it and, and get it only in full force within the county schools. She already has an agreement with the county schools to be able to do this where they can take the older kids out of class and take them down to the middle school and, and work with the, work with the other kids, work with the fifth and sixth graders. She'd like to be able to get a intern from WVU and, and they would pay, it would pay that intern like fifteen hour, fifteen hours, and she had a rate there. She actually come in with a request of eight thousand dollars. Six thousand of that was to pay for an intern. Two semesters, three thousand each. And sitting here talking to her, she said she wasn't really sure what numbers to put in there for that. It was kind of a throw in the ballpark type thing. But she said it could be up to five thousand dollars it will cost to do these students. So after she left, we talked and we, we want to recommend to pay them twelve thousand dollars, to give them twelve thousand dollars, five thousand for each semester for the student, plus another two or three, two thousand for reimbursed on the mileage and materials and training. And we recommend we pay, go ahead and, once she signs the contract, they pay half upfront. So it'll be six thousand, pay them six thousand upfront. And then once she does some reporting back to us, then pay the other six thousand. At the next, at the next quarter. So that is our recommendation. The other one we met with is Loving Hands. And this is only a difficult, difficult one to talk about. They have good thoughts, they have good ideas. We feel that they are my words is, are trying to reinvent the wheel. They have no dedicated program. They have no program that has been proven to work. They're not set up with anything. Talked about wanting to buy instruments and getting kids from middle school to come up and learn to play instruments. And to that note, the band that played Kaiser Middle, we heard them at the thing the other week and, or last week, and they actually sounded really good and they had a nice good sized band and I'm not sure, you know. They have the band at the middle school. They want to put money in to have an instruments up there. They want to try to mentor kids and, but they have no certified or mentors or even like recovery specialists or anything like that that have been trained properly to be able to do what they want to do. We, we don't feel, they came in with a request of twenty thousand dollars and we do not feel it is a good idea to recommend payment to them. Just because they're not really set up. They have a lot of good ideas, but they just don't have, they're not organized, they don't have the training, they don't have everything they need to really get it set up the way it needs to be set up. So those are the three we met with. The the other two that had applied was Ontrack, which we approved money at the last time. And we approved them seven thousand at the last.
Yeah.
On the last paper.
That's regional family net.
Yeah, I think Family Resource Network or. So they, they applied again and we kind of stated that we wanted to pay, once, once you get a payment, you can't come back for another year. And, and so that's why we didn't talk to them. They're, they just want money for the same thing and go for the same thing. The the other one was Children's Home Society. They are House and Romney. They have no they didn't show anything on their application, didn't deal anything with, directly with Mineral County, and it's all Hinter County. So we kind of, we rejected them. We recommend rejecting them and referring to the West Virginia First Foundation.
That's it. Okay, so you need approval.
We're asking for approval of the money to the three D recovery, we're family for life church.
Well, we do have separate motions, so for three D.
Do I have a motion to approve the funding for three D for their request?
Twenty.
Up to twenty thousand. Okay, then I will, I'll second that.
And yeah, those WVU Extension Service were twelve thousand.
Thank you.
And also I just want to add, while we have a good crowd here, that the West Virginia First Foundation does have applications out. Meant to look at it this morning and recall what the deadline is. I won't say it's middle October, but beginning to middle October, but the West Virginia First Foundation has applications on their website, westvirginiafirst.org or dot com or. And they're accepting applications and, and each region will pay it, I think it's eight hundred thousand dollars, but not any one individual, but. But anyway, that application process, that started with the First Foundation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do you have any information on the facilities chart?
Actually, don't.
Okay, we'll hold that up for the next meeting, general election. Twenty four.
Okay, so with the Port Ashby private school not being used anymore, that was not going to be a voting location. I did get confirmation from Port Ashby Fire Hall that we will be able to use that location. I will get notices out to all voters, M three six nine, to let them know if that changed. Still waiting on confirmation of two of my holding places. Hoping as we get closer that that we're, I had an issue with one last time, so hoping, hoping we're not going to have an issue with it this time. So ballots are in, absentees went out Friday. We had twelve online voters go out Friday and another fifty four paper ballots go out. They all were delivered. Early voting will be the twenty third, start on October twenty third and end on November second. Homework for classes, I only had three dates available because there's jury trials. Those two weeks, I only had one available, four days of the four rooms available. So I'm squeezing six classes in those three days. Getting a good response on homeworkers, but still need some more volunteers. Other than that, I think change on me was all pretty good.
Thank you, Lauren. Well, we'll move down to do business for a few minutes and then do the timbers. So we have a new custodian hire, Mel's County Commission has hired Elise Seville for the position of custodian. She actually like bring her down to get fixed, clear paperwork. So I have a motion to approve Elise Seville, having a new custodian. To move, I'm sorry, through that also.
Not for you last time, for the all fire.
Does our protection fund forty five thousand three hundred fifty three dollars forty six cents?
Yes, but in the distributions, what was your decision on that?
We'll probably just do it the same we did last time. You guys agree?
Yeah, I make a motion, we just distribute it equally.
And I had, and I'm, I'm figure because it left just a little bit in there, a carryover, and it was a rounded figure. I had that for you last week.
So we received the fire protection fund money from the state, forty five thousand three hundred fifty three dollars and cents. We have eleven fire companies, so we decided just to equal it out. Everybody gets the same amount. We, there was discussion, we've done this twice. There was discussion prior about fire meetings about dividing it up according to calls, because some fire companies are busier than others, obviously, and their expenses will be higher. But we talked with the chief of fire department and some of the fire department representatives, and they agreed be less controversial, which is divided it up eleven ways. So that's how we did it the last time, and that's how we'll do it this time. We hope this money will keep coming in. I mean, it does mean a lot for the fire companies. They all seem like they're struggling with fine funding. Okay, the request to hire prosecuting attorney. I'll, I'll read, dear commissioners, each of you, where Charlie Johnson, currently assistant prosecuting attorney, Hampshire County is the only individual who
Hampshire County is the only individual who filed earlier this year to rank for prosecuting attorney in Mineral County. Mr. Johnson faces no opposition in the November election, so he will be assuming the responsibility. As Chief Prosecuting Attorney for Mineral County effective January one, two thousand twenty-five. With the existing caseload, most recent indictments from the September two thousand twenty-four term of grand jury. Approaching grand jury two thousand twenty-five term of grand jury. Currently investigations include a murder case. As well as becoming familiar with the Mineral County agencies and officers, I believe that is imperative that Mr. Johnson transfer to Mineral County as soon as practical. I have spoken with Mr. Johnson. On numerous occasions and taking into consideration his national county workload, it appears that he would be available to start with Mineral County October the first, two thousand twenty-four. Therefore, this will serve as a request that Mr. Johnson be approved as an assistant prosecuting attorney for Mineral County effective October one. And remain in that position until he would assume the duties of Chief Prosecuting Attorney, January one. Has respectively requested that Mr. Johnson be approved for this three month position based upon annual salary rate of eighty-one thousand dollars. Which is his current rate of pay in Hampshire County. If this matter could be resolved in September twenty-fourth commission meeting, it would be greatly appreciated. Signed, Kelly Thankday. Current prosecuting attorney. So we would be entitled, we would be entitled to pay them three months of that eighty-one thousand.
Now, it's actually, I believe, November.
I was moved. So that's paid two months of that.
Which is less for us, so.
So that's money, but best time for him to get acquainted. It's, yeah, it's not a lot of time. Okay, do I have a motion to bring him on November one and pay him two months salary? I second that. I approve that also. He has a lot of workload here. I think there was thirty indictments in the last grand jury, if I remember right. Thirty-two, what do you, thirty-two?
And back to the fire department, so those checks, if you do four thousand one hundred and twenty and then that leaves just like thirty dollars as a carryover for the account then.
And you'll get those checks out. Okay, discuss rural area estimate to install split units for the judge's office.
I have uh rural areas estimate for fourteen thousand, six fifty-two. Uh this is for the outdoor unit and green indoor units. Is that in your, you have that in?
Oh, we have. Oh, yes.
Uh he just said, I would say for these quotes that all the units in the courthouse have been specie and they have held up extremely well. The ones that are very old and have lasted for a long time and so definitely solid units. Uh I also have an asset for Duckworth, you have that as well? And it is. Uh maybe this, we can go on here and see you on L G and the total quote is for twelve thousand nine hundred.
Okay, so this is only one for the judge's office, his secretary in the jury room about the downstairs. I don't know about that one.
Right. It is, it's one of the, it's one of the split units. The guys that one outside unit, but no three that. Commentary needs air conditioning downstairs.
There's three offices that are going to be the judge's ones. Already waiting, they're waiting for the construction, but gee, how much, what are they? I guess it won't be late. I probably should run when he did that.
All right, so we, do we need to make a decision now on these? And should we add these downstairs in on it?
Well, maybe that's why he was thinking otherwise, discussing the construction downstairs. And trying to figure out what we're going to be, yeah, like that way I guess you're not working around units, right?
Well, I'm sure he's not going to jump on it immediately. What do you got?
I didn't have a copy of the other one, so.
I don't either. Is she, you know, the two estimates?
I think so, we see if he wants, if he was needing that approval now.
What are you saying? Let's skip over this. All right, then we'll get back to it. Okay, approve new animal control officer hired. We know, you're not shutting the shut the leave heart. Hey, were you shutting the shut, new J J? That guy's going to be the new one. Okay, we had interviews um, I think we interviewed seven, I believe. We interviewed seven people. We, I think we interviewed seven people for the, the position and uh. Missy narrowed it down to one, one. And so she's asking us if we would approve, uh I can't figure his first name, but I think Richard, Richard Byers, yes. So she asked us, we approve Richard Byers as the new hire and he will start sometime in October?
October sixteen. I want to say thank you for getting on the. I appreciate it. Less time for me being by myself. Appreciate the raise. Um I'm not going to stay very long because I've got things to do and I'm by myself. So um I can't wait to getting started October the sixteen, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you stay for just a second? Cause the next thing about the shelter grant, the animal.
Oh, yeah. I don't have any paperwork on the show.
I, I was, we just thought.
All right, Stanton Shelter Grant Award for the Animal Control Facility.
So we uh applied for this grant last year and we did not get it. And then they ended up um having some additional funds left over and they reached out to us to see if we were still interested and of course we were. So we updated numbers with Missy, uh resubmitted the grant and actually today we should be getting a check that we need to sign for, for twenty-two thousand dollars. It's going to be for a furnace and cooling unit. Uh heavy duty ten by ten kennels and raised dog beds for the.
Perfect, awesome.
Yes, thank you. I did buy some of those dog beds, raised dog beds, um but you find that when they're bored. They chew the dogs, but I'm still using them regardless until they're non-functional. Um but thank you, I appreciate all the hard work you helped me with. Being by myself, that's a lot to do though.
Not a problem, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh it would says they do need approval and I don't actually have a written um thing from Duckworth. I just have it where he wrote here. Uh Duckworth heating and air conditioning included for one outdoor unit with two heads to cover Judge Currier's office and Stacy's office. One outdoor unit and one head for the jury room. He identifies L G and the total quote is twelve thousand nine hundred. And he said they, we do need approval. Um they have temporary air conditioning and their system is broken.
Okay, so why can't the, if they're going to have two outside units, then why can't they add two more inside units and go in the judge's offices downstairs?
I'm not sure.
Cause you can put up to five, some of those units, you put five outside units, some on three.
Yeah, you want me to ask them that?
Yeah, then that would take care of it all and have to deal with it. And that would be a common issue with the, that'd be a common issue downstairs where we might hold off, people can do that. Hold off on doing it, but yeah, you'll need approval, but why couldn't they do that? I mean, that would work if we're gonna, why have the unit and only have one head? All right, so it's nine thirty. We have an appointment with the town originally. You just would like, you have the floor?
Yes, Officer uh Mark Yelker, he's the speaker you have originally. How you doing? Good morning. I mean, I appreciate you seeing us. Uh the first thing I'd like to do is um. I know you're probably tired of hearing from us, because I'm, I'm tired of dealing with this myself. I'd like to give you some pictures. Um I'd like to show you these pictures first and then I'd like to show these pictures. The pictures on this side of the table are actually a property located in Ridgely that I actually uh obtained a warrant for the owner. We're having an open dump. And the pictures on this side of the table are the property that we are here discussing. Which um apparently nobody else can determine that, that there is a dump there um. I believe somebody's up for you because here's a car full of garbage. Here's a house that's got appliances laying around, a trailer's got appliances laying around it. Here's a camper that doesn't eat on it. Here's more dung.
It's October sixth, is that correct?
Uh someone threw a drone at me with these pictures. Um but my problem is the town, you know, I have authority in the town, I don't have authority in the county. Uh any police officer in the state of West Virginia that can issue a citation under Oracle twenty. Can go out there to this property and, and you know, write a ticket. Um D N R was there probably two weeks ago, three weeks ago. Uh they said they didn't see anything. This, these pictures were taken uh two and a half weeks ago. Um I don't know what they were looking at, but I mean, yeah, when you look at the property from the road, you can see most of this stuff. Now, the other issue we have is the assessor's office. Um we called, I called a couple of weeks ago. Um when I, when these pictures were taken, I called the assessor's office and they told me that. The only two item, there was only one trailer on that property that was assessed. It was nineteen seventy-three. Uh trailer fourteen by seventy, I believe, there's part of a picture of it there. Um and apparently contact was made after the commit, or after the, the uh my inquiry. And all of a sudden, the assessor's office was out there last week looking at this property. They haven't looked at it. Um the, the individual I talked to at the assessor's office told me since nineteen ninety-nine. The only trailer that they had listed as being out there was that nineteen seventy-three trailer. Well, now I called the assessor's office yesterday, they were out there last week and now they have another trailer on there being assessed. Nobody can tell me who owns the campers. There's six or seven of those campers out there, they're all full of garbage. Nobody can tell me who's paying the taxes on them. They put, couldn't even give me a name of who owned the property at the assessor's office. And um you know, we're here, we just want, we just want it cleaned up. I mean, I've, I've actually put people in jail. For the three pictures that I showed you first. And these people, I mean, it, it's a mess. I mean, uh and I, I don't know why. The health department's been called, this gentleman back here has made numerous complaints. Um I was at his house when the D N R called him back and said, we were there, we didn't see garbage. I mean, that car's full of garbage. Um you know, and if, I can guarantee you that if this house or this property was in the middle of Kaiser, it would be cleaned up tomorrow.
Right.
It, it would not be left to, to go like that. And um I, I just don't, I, I mean, I'm not the only one. Everybody here is concerned. There's a lot more people that would have came. Um but we're just, we just, I want the property cleaned up and I'm not here. Listen, I know law enforcement's a hard job, okay? I've been doing this job a long time. These gentlemen here have been doing it a long time. Being a garbage man, you know, I didn't sign up to be a garbage man and I know they didn't either. But it's somebody's responsibility to clean this property up. If I can go out and arrest somebody for less than that, a hundred times less than that. And somebody could come and arrest somebody for, for, for what's going on here, or at least films them to clean it up.
I spoke with the gentleman there this morning, give him, I talked to Thomas Butcher about this, I've also talked to Samuel Cranfield, you know him?
No.
He's the E P Romney.
Yeah.
I spoke with him just last week about this, I talked to him over there and anyway. Uh he gave me uh a gentleman's name, he was Swift, I believe it was, that you've already talked to about that.
Yeah, uh speaking of Mr. Swift, he told me on the phone that he was out there a couple of years ago and that don't look that bad. I said, well, look bad, it looks worse.
So I'll get, I'll get back with Thomas or, yeah.
Yes, we've determined this is not in the city limits, correct?
Yes, not in the city limit.
That is the same one that uh the previous administration uh chief tried to annex without annexing. And myself and Lieutenant Loveman had conducted investigation on that activity.
I will get with Thomas Butcher, should they, because this one trailer is partly on First Energy's property.
Correct, correct.
Because, and he wanted to give that property to Ridley. I don't know if he's, if they still want to get rid of it or not.
Uh I don't, I mean, I, I would like to see what that property looks like when all the leaves fall off the trees, because I've never seen the garbage truck stop at that.
Probably look better.
Well, I don't know what's over the bank. And, and, and I, like I said, we're, we're in the, I mean. I expect my neighbors to keep their property clean and, 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 and it's a mess. It is a mess. Um you, you can look at the pictures and anybody, I'm not, I'm not down in the D N R. Um but I've talked to the, I've talked to the D E P, I've talked with the, you know, the D N R and, and. Uh they sent three officers out, they told me, and nobody saw an issue and um I mean, were they blind? I don't know what the deal was when they showed up, but uh you can keep all those pictures. You can have them all. I have plenty of copies of them. We just want the property cleaned up um. Uh this gentleman had to pay for a dumpster because the rats came in, came down to his house.
We have a Kendra Center with kids. Here to mark.
And a, a, any help you can give us um. I mean, I don't want to keep coming back here every month. I don't like, you know, I don't like.
I don't know what we can do. Sir, is there anything we can do legally?
When I contacted the D E P, I contacted the state highways, who deals with them, so they need to serve the dog. The trash is enclosed in vehicles, it's not blowing out. I mean, I don't know, I see there's somebody's property in the lane, the ticket because they've got a camper that somebody does in the neighborhood setting on their property.
What about all these, what about all the stoves, refrigerators, appliances?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm just going to be honest with you. I don't know who you talk to, but I can tell you right now, one hundred percent. If that was in the city or if I worked for you, I could take those pictures to the management's office and he would issue me a warrant today. I'm telling you, one hundred percent. And I don't know who you talk to and I really don't care who you talk to, but I can tell you right now, just looking at chapter twenty in the code book. That's a violation, somebody should be arrested, somebody should be charged for that. And you can sit here and tell me that you talked to such and such, a car full, a, a car full of garbage is not considered. And they, and they told you a car full of garbage and you accepted that answer. That if somebody can have a car full, so I can load a car, I can load a tractor trailer full of garbage, bring it into Kaiser and sit it, as long as it's enclosed, not an issue.
So my question is, you contacted all these other local, but how come you never contacted sheriff's office to talk to them?
We came here and talked to them, they're your boss.
They're not my boss.
They're, they're your boss.
They're not my boss.
Should have had to contact.
They're not my boss. No, 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 let's back up. By constitution, they're not my boss.
Okay, well, I don't, I, I listen.
All you had to do, so what are you going to do? Will you come down and see me and go talk about?
When we leave here, we'll go talk about it.
But you know, you come in here and.
You're not attacking nobody's office.
And you just did.
No, I did not. No, this is exactly, this is exactly what I said. Any police officer in the state of what, now wait a minute now, any police officer in the state of what's pretending to contact you, Sergeant Wavely? Sir, sir. Of the state, yeah, and you know what they said? Call the D N R. It's a D N R problem.
We have the D N R on the phone on the D E P, let's see that. Okay, for you guys originally, I got Samuel Panfield in here, he's the D E P rep over at Romney. Uh who wants to talk first?
I'll talk too.
All right.
How you doing, sir? How are you?
I'm doing well, I already.
Pretty good. The chief, chief of police originally.
Nice to meet you, sir.
Yes, sir.
So what's the question?
Well, I mean, we're, we're here, we're talking about a property that's located outside of Ridley. We're trying to figure out why it hasn't been cleaned up, or why someone hasn't been charged with, you know, operating an open dump, or why, when the DNR went out there, they, they said there wasn't no issues. That's, that's what I'm trying to find.
Samuel, I don't know if you can get the clip on your phone, but I did send you one of the pictures that the, that the town of Ridley gave to us this morning. So, it, it's a mess. It, it is definitely a mess, something needs to be done. And we was wondering also, does the DEP, will they furnish a couple dumpsters to get that cleaned up? I don't know about the help, but I know they have done this before.
Oh, um, so as a right. My speaker, so that you're aware, and, and I think that he's such a good chief of police.
Yes, yes, younger, younger Mark, younger.
Younger, okay. Um, so I am not as the, I'm not no inspector for, for the county. Just as a preference, preference on all these things, so if I have, and myself, I have no enforcement ability. Um, so, but, speaking with our inspector, I, I had texted him the other day after talking.
Mr. Swift, right?
With Chad.
Yeah.
Chad Swift, yes. After talking and texting him the other day, I, I had told Roger about this, but this is like, Chad had said that he's been there multiple times. Um, and, and is there a trash service to their property?
I, I'll be honest with you, I don't even know if they utilize trash service.
Samuel, by looking at the place, I don't think they do.
Well, I mean, that's, that's, that, that, yeah, that's
And he had understood that there was a trash service.
Yeah.
And then another consideration is, what he had said to me is that the campers are, seem to be personal items, and it's not in their ability to call the solid waste, right? Um, by the look, looking at the picture, right, it does look to be very more, right, scattered around and the like. Um, but I, so I don't know exactly any of those write-ups that Chad has done, right, and again, some of these inspections, I'm sure, and have spread it up, I remember all of them. Um, but that is, I, I'm not sure the, what, why, what all has, why, what is the decision point, right? Like, so, but, but those couple considerations about, about the trash service and the personal items of the campers.
Yeah, and we also have, there's probably fifteen stoves, washers and dryers laying around. Just in pieces, they're not even, they're, they've been out in the weather for years. I mean, I've been here, I've been here over two years, and, and it's gotten progressively, progressively worse since I've been here. I mean, the mandatory disposal, you know, for the, for the trash service, that's, you know, that's one charge. I could care less if anybody gets charged, we just want it cleaned up. All we want is it cleaned up, that's it.
Yes, I, I can definitely see, you know, the baggage.
Now, I believe one of the gentlemen here spoke to
Yeah, I talked to Chad Wood, and also talked to the, I was talking to Mr. Schubert.
You want to step up there, we can hear you, please. That's all, Mark, stay right here.
Yeah, I talked to a couple, we got a right of way that's blocking the, going to the tunnel out there, and that we could have used it there a while back, we had a guy escape from the finance center, it was nice to have that open. Also talked to a, a Scott Weisner working down in Pawpaw, which is in West Virginia too. They had city water and sewage, and they cut the guy's service off, and we cleaned a lot up, so why couldn't that pretend to going outside originally? They're on this trail for, that's what I like to know. And how can you have a trailer from Fort Ashby condemned and bring it into Ridley? Is another thing. And we got a job, childcare center, it's not very far from, from this lot, and the rats are already in this area, so we got that to address.
I got you, um. I, so, to speak for myself, I, I, I apologize for not getting the position. I don't, not in the position to make a move on this, on this whole situation, and I, I've been trying to, right, to go in between to get comments, to get information. Chad is really on that forefront there, right? Uh, so, um. What, it's time to think of what the next, what it, what is the next step, all right?
The next steps is, and they can clean it up, it's all we're, it's all we're asked for. And nobody should have to live like that. And we got a town there we're proud of, and it's about time somebody does something.
That's a disgrace.
And that's the first thing you see coming into Ridley, yeah, coming out of Ridley, and it's a disgrace. And it's a health issue, and it's time something be done. And, and nobody should have to live like that.
Hey, hey, Thomas, are you going to be at the region eight meeting Thursday morning in Morefield? Where Melissa announced the other day, or how can I get these pictures to you where you can get it to Mr. Swift?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize, I thought you said Thomas. Hi, you?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I'm thinking, I'm thinking of Thomas Butcher, I'm sorry, because, see, they, they own part of that ground, that, that trailer is back over. The First Energy does.
Um, you're welcome to, to text me, email me the pictures, and I can get to Chad.
Alright, I'll get them to you some way, okay?
Oh. To give you the first fact, there, it is not the only, only one, by no means, in any, in your county, or any county in West Virginia. And numerous, numerous properties are in that condition, and, and whatever the private residents, it becomes a very much of a difficult situation to force that resident to make a change, right? Um, a lot of times, it, it doesn't, if there's one over here in Romney, that from my understanding, uh, individual continues to bring waste from other places within the state onto their property, and they've gone to deal with it, I think for ten years or better. So, sorry.
Alright, alright, Samuel, I'll tell you what, I'll just shoot these photos, and I'll get them to you here shortly, and you can give them to Mr. Swift. Is he usually in the DEP officer alone? Okay, I'll get, I'll get them to you. Don't think that's good.
Thank you.
Alright. Yeah, well, you can be, if you get these.
Okay, hey, thanks very much, thank you.
These people were willing to do that.
I'm also going to contact Thomas Butcher for you.
And me and him went out there. Me and Tom Butcher went out there.
They're creating the garden.
And they're only, that trailer's only sitting on them maybe ten, fifteen. And Tom said, I, I, he said, I, I would do something about this, if it's going to melt down. Yeah, you can't get through that.
They have pigs, they, and, and, and they, where they can have chickens and everything, and they're now living in town.
First Energy offered it.
Everyone I talked to said, yeah.
They offered it to the county.
Ready to start out.
Again, yes, they offered it in County, because that's when Gary Howell wanted to build.
And I, I remember getting seventy-eight.
I'm concerned about this. All the stuff I get on, I know, okay.
You know, and there's rats coming down in Chris.
Here's what I don't, we're, all we're doing right now is making these phone calls, all, all we're doing is just passing the buck to another person.
Yeah.
Why can't a police officer of the county, or the state, go down there and do the same thing me and Mark doing originally all the time?
I can write a ticket, but that no means go clean up.
Well, that's when they go to jail.
I got news for you. We're not letting, we got a lot of felons we're not putting in jail, and I don't see them putting somebody in jail and letting them sit there for si- six years or a month, because they have trash on their property.
We, we charged the guy last month.
Okay, you have a city ordinance.
We charged it to the county.
No, we charged it to the county. He sat in jail for a week, because he couldn't afford bond. I don't teach a lot of these people a lesson.
But, again, these same people, when they get out, if they got the money for bond, how they gonna pay somebody cleaned up?
I don't know, but I'll tell you what, he, he found out how to get a hold of the, get really trashy.
That isn't where this problem, we need to find a solution. And I said this to the last administration, when we had the problem, when the chief went up there and threatened to do stuff that he couldn't do when we had to investigate.
But no, I understand that.
Okay, is we need somebody to go sit down and, and talk to them, about, can we find them another place to live? And then can we get them to maybe sign this property over, and then somebody come in with the money to clean it up? Because they don't have the money to clean it up, and the one, the, some of the people we talked to down there, I don't know if their education level is.
Well, no, they're not.
They're, they're, they're not capable of making sound decisions.
The mother is, but she don't do it.
Right, but I mean, they're two young men that live there.
They're just ill.
Right, they're just here. So, the question isn't writing them tickets, just writing the tickets, like I told with the last administration. Let's get somebody together, a group, to find out how we can help these people get them out of that situation, and then see if we can get that property cleaned up. But nobody wanted to do that.
Right.
Okay, nobody wanted to try to help them get out of that situation. All they wanted was, you come up with a place to live and, and clean this property up, and then you got some money for that.
So they had money to bring in dumpy trailers in there.
Do you know how many people give them that money, and how many people would say, well, I'll, I'll move that trailer down there before you, they ain't got nothing else, I'll give them a charge. Which been down, you know, so that is where the solution we need to find.
Well, then the biggest solution, if you're saying go that route, then someone needs to contact, because their kids ain't being raised right.
That is in the problem.
It's adult protective services, someone's overseeing them, because they get paid.
Yes, it doesn't mean, it, that doesn't mean that somebody's over them. We evaluate it.
Let's stop the conversation.
That doesn't mean that the social security safety have to be.
I'd like to say something to the county commission.
Go ahead.
Mission meeting for this eyesore that we've got in Ridley. The mayor and council have did a wonderful job cleaning up eyesores that have been in our town, and we shouldn't have to put up with this. I'm a property owner, and I have lived in Ridley my entire life. I'm a registered voter, and I don't see why we have to put up with this. If you can't answer the question, what we can do about this, who do we go to to find out? The police department can't do it by themselves. We need you, as, as county commissioners, elected officials, to please find out how and where we have to go. If we have to go to Charleston, tell us, we have to go to Charleston.
Okay, thank you.
I, I just spoke with Roger and Jerry, and we're gonna, you're gonna call me this week and let me know.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll see what we can do.
Okay. Did you, did you have any response to it?
I want to do a little research, because the problem's not unique. I'm Rick Allen Brant, and those don't know, I represent different eighty-eight, you're not part of, but the issue's not unique. It's across this county, every county, it seems. I'm not happy too, because it does seem like a whole bunch of kick it down the road, let somebody else not answer it. It just keeps going on, on. So, I'm, I'm going to reach out to DEP, and how do we force them to, obviously, based upon what you presented here? You have people that are, say, reasonable judgment, saying, this, this is the best, it's the best, then you have DEP folks going and saying, no, it's not.
And I say, tell them, get in the car, and go buy the lookout, so. I live two hours Georgia away from, and I see it every day, I've seen it for ten years. It's been known as the pig farm, it's sad. I mean, when I was raised, I didn't have, we didn't have very much, but I'll tell you one thing, we had water, and we didn't have a bunch of trash like that. They don't have to live like that. Oh, I jumped the heck out of there, and water and soap don't cost much. Clean the place up, you know, everything there should be condemned. Our house was condemned in Ridley, we had to find another house out on Twenty-Eighth. You know, we didn't like that, but then Ridley coming along, you condemn the thing. But now that there, so half of them trailers, or all them trailers were brought in from Fort Ashby that was already condemned. But still was bring them into Ridley, not Ridley, but right outside Ridley. And when I was younger, there used to be a sign out at Spine Dog, was it used to say, welcome to Ridley. That was a long time ago, because I'm seventy-four. That was a long time ago, now they moved it in, ready to start down into Ridley, welcome to Ridley. So, what happened there? It used to be a mile out the road, now it's great, and, and the trailer court's right on the outside of Ridley, so Ridley can't do anything, you know?
About years ago, they used to just put those signs up.
Really?
I mean, it's like the line in Kaiser, the line in Kaiser used to sit down by the water plant, okay? That wasn't the city limits, but that's where the line was, it had the sign that said, welcome to Kaiser. And now they moved it from that location back out to right to the edge of the city limit. So, a lot of the small towns usually just put signs up, wherever they could get a place off the road, but put the sign. And by times, those weren't exactly right.
I mean, they, they have the door open all night long in that thing, it's split up all night long.
I, I understand, I was there, but I'm trying.
Say where you live, I do, I live in Ridley.
Right, and I.
I'm by the old school.
I totally understand.
Oh, by the pig farm.
But. We got to find somebody who can force them, or be able to seize that property to take it.
Yeah.
I can go out, I can write ten tickets this week, and there's nothing in the code that's gonna say that I, that I can go in there and force them out of their house, and I can go in there with a bulldozer and take their trailer. It's their property.
You can't condemn it, but.
You can't condemn nothing.
And that's not, and that's not a health question. That's who we're trying to find, but Rick's gonna try, Rick's gonna try to find out for us.
Hey, I have, I have one question.
You can write a ticket. I can get them to write a ticket, but it doesn't mean they're going to clean it up.
Right, I agree.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen.
And that's what I tried to talk to the last group about, was what can we do to try to get the situation resolved? And, and get it cleaned up? And find the answer to the problem, you know, I can.
We're back to my question, asking the county commissioners, tell us what we need to do. Who do we have to talk to? Where do we have to go? We're gonna, or mental county residents.
We're gonna find that information out.
And you support mental county, correct?
Yes, yes.
Well, support us.
I am, I, I.
We, we, we've already contacted DEP, we've already had, I've already talked to the health department.
Yeah.
I mean, we've already talked to everybody we can talk to, and we're continuing to talk to them about trying to get some help somewhere for you guys to. I mean, we've already talked to everybody we can talk to and we're continuing to talk to them about trying to get some help somewhere for you guys to get this thing taken care of. Um, but I don't know what else we can do. We're doing everything we can.
Has any of you guys actually drove by the place and actually looked at?
I do, I do work in Ford, now I ride by it all the time. Bobby can bounce.
You know, you know.
I know exactly where you're talking about.
Yeah, we do.
Would you like to live that or would you like to have that in your neighborhood?
No.
I don't know what we can do. Our hands are kinda tied.
We've got two, we've got two of them in our area where I live. One of them, thank the good Lord. A family bought it from the Fort Ashby area, cleaned it up and it looks nice. The other one, uh. We can't get it cleaned up. And I've even, I'll tell you what I did do. Uh, I even called, uh. Hagerstown News, tried to get them to do a story on it. It was a mess. It, I'm telling you, you're in for a long battle, but.
I don't understand.
I, I'm with you.
The waters soak don't cost much.
I agree.
You know.
And you can sell them, you can sell that stuff for money that.
But what I got, I got a question. Uh, is he, who's here from the city?
There's a mayor.
They're all from. If I go talk to them. And try to get them to, to work on cleaning this up, would Richly provide a dump truck? And load, load that stuff up and get it off the property?
It's just it, it's not Richly's problem. It's the county.
That's their problem.
Okay.
It's county property.
Alright.
I wouldn't, you couldn't pay me a million dollars to get down there because they got bed bugs and they got rats.
I meant the outside area.
Okay, if, if. We could get dumpsters there, do those people, you think they would clean it up?
No, you'd have to go in.
They, we live in that way. Honestly, I fixed, I had to go in there and fix the water line one time. And that water line don't belong to Richly. But they, it was blowing all over the place. They called nine one one. I had to go out. I had Officer Lot with me at the time. I dug that water line up and fixed it. Because they're, they wasn't gonna be able to fix it. Cause I knew Ducks has been called about it before too. Oh, I asked them, I left that hole open. I said, go buy three, three bags of sack creep. And put on there so that, uh, cap won't come off anymore. They never put nothing on it. Turned around and blowed it right back off. Well, I spent two days digging there. So I finally found the shut off for the line even going in there. I shut that down. And turned the whole town back. When I had, for two days, I had half of the town on very low pressure water, all because of that place. I, I, I'd like to know who's to say, why can't I dig it up and cut the water line off and say, provide for your own? Because that's not the city limits.
You'd have to call public service.
I've already called public services. And they're not telling me I can't cut it off.
Should the town of Richly be paying water for them when they're in the county?
And that varies.
Yeah.
Public Service Commission rules, you can go so many miles outside of your jurisdiction.
Yeah.
To supply water if there's no other source. That, that, that was the answer I got from the public service. I wouldn't wanna drill anything that's in that water dirt out there. But beside the point, the house isn't even livable inside.
Yeah, I know.
Cause I had to step in it and I made one step in it and turn around and walk right back out. That's what I said there. Okay, why can't the county call adult protective services and go in? He's saying you can't do nothing because they're adults. That's not true. If them adults are, I'm speaking police. If they're adults, these two kids are adults and they're getting disability. From this, I don't know if it's from government, from the state, wherever they're getting paid for. The mothers controlling their money. And they're not providing a, a clean, safe place to live for them two kids. To me, they're kids, but they are adults.
Right. Okay, thank you gentlemen. We will continue with this.
Please notice now what we can do.
We will be in touch with the mayor or with the chief of police.
I mean, Bill and Bobby and they, they're fixing the town originally up nights.
Right.
But they're all my life. They're, they're doing a heck of a good job on that town. You know what I mean? And, but they get a bum rap if I'm a stranger coming out of town, coming into Richly. And it says, welcome to Richly. And the first thing you see is that. That's the opinion you get, you know, we all try to keep our houses up. We do a good job, but there's, you know, that, there's eyesore and I, I don't know how people can live like that. I mean, waters don't, don't cost much, you know? And they just keep hauling trailers in and they just keep filling up with trash, you know? It's just.
And the only one we vet out from is that animal control officer. She's the one that found it. Cause they dug in the levee van. So I gotta give that lady a lot of credit. At least he tried to find them and it did something.
Yeah, they did have pigs there, but I don't think there's pigs. I think they got chickens maybe now, I don't know, but it used to be pigs inside their trailer. They leave the door open any time of day, any time of night, you can ride by there and their, their doors open to the trailer and you'll see a big pig. Now, not lately, I ain't seen a free year. Used to walk by the door, the front door, pigs inside the trailer. You know, the Richly police back when, uh, Mike Miller was the cop. They just called down to the levee because the pigs was eating up the levee. Oh, that's federal, that's federal. So here they come and they did, they did that. Well, why? I was talking to the cop, Mike Miller. I said, Mike, I said, I don't know if you know it or not, but there's a piglet in your police officer, the cruiser. The door, he left the door open, the little pig has climbed up the car, police car, behind the wheel. What? He thinks they're flushing the pig out. Get out of here, get out.
Alright, thank you gentlemen. Thank you. Yeah, so do I. Alright, thanks for coming.
Thank you. Just for the benefit of all, I, I made that property working, seeing it and do, do something positive.
Alright. Thank you. I wish, I wish we had an answer, but.
Well, and, 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 and that's why I was trying to find some way that we could get it cleaned up, but. You know, and, and that's why I asked them, would they, would they help me if I could get down there and get them to help clean it up? They don't wanna do that either because they said it's your problem.
Yeah, once, once before to black a place.
Yes.
We got D E P.
Yeah, I remember that.
We cleaned this place up. Of course, it didn't stay like that. I mean, they, they, it, it's a mentality thing.
Done a lot of work up there.
But the thing of this, even if we did this, it's short-lived probably. If we had dumpster down.
And that's why I was asking, was there some way we could get together and meet and find a way to get them a better place to live?
Well, that was my question. If we could get them s- other housing and then someone buy that place.
Or just get them to say, hey, town of Richly can have it if they're cleaned up. You know, and that was.
Get them into some sort of housing in Maryland.
But that's what I was trying, that's what I tried to talk to them about. The last time was, how can we get them out of there? So, we can get rid of the problem totally. Get them better housing. Those kids, I, they are kids. I mean, they're like. They seem like twenty or ten year olds in adult bodies. Uh, and they're terrified of everything, everybody. But, and, and that's what I asked them before. Can we, can you set up a meeting and we will work to try to come to a problem to take care of the whole situation? Because it's like you said, I can write them a ticket. They can walk in and plead guilty to it.
They're not gonna be paid fine.
They can't pay the fine.
Okay.
Don't have the money.
How many people live there? Four?
Uh, when I was down there, there was three.
There's a mother and two kids?
Yes, I think at the time, me and Chris was down there.
Alright, I think that's what it is.
Alright, I'll tell you what.
If they're, if that's their custom.
It's gonna have to try, try to get their mindset changed.
Well, that's not gonna happen.
And, you know, I'll call, I'll call adult protective services. They could call adult protective services and make a referral. But again, you know, they, they keep saying that, you know, adult protective services, adult protectors, but they don't call me. But I will call and have dogs, I'll go up right, I'll go up season weave here to adult protective service and say, can you get down and check on them? But, I mean, I.
I'm going to make some calls to see if I could find some housing in Cumberland. That they would be happy to move to. I mean, I don't, I, to be honest with you, I don't know what route to go.
Yeah, I totally agree. I mean, they're, I, I wouldn't keep, I wouldn't put my dogs in those trailer either.
Well, the pictures he just showed, they're, they're disgusting. They flew over with a drone.
Yeah, if you go inside, you step up on a porch and you look outside, I'll. Uh, I wouldn't, uh.
Well, and like they said, bed bugs and all kinds of stuff there. Alright, thank you. Thanks. Alright, we have another appointment. We're ten minutes late, uh, with, um, Mr. Dowden. Issues about the road. You're welcome to speak, sir. Why do you have that?
I've taken my warrant bill at, uh, ten minutes after eleven on the twenty, twenty eight in Crest Town. The bank did not process it enough, gave them, uh, Department. And they sent me that letter. As you can see, I, I paid my, uh, bill on twenty eighth all the time.
And I'm gonna cut you off, or they already did cut you off?
No, they.
They haven't cut you off?
So, you paid it? Yeah. And I got the letter, uh, uh, two days after.
You paid it?
Yeah. Talk to them about this.
Okay. He did. But you're up to date now with the payment. They just sent you the letter stating that you weren't, but you had actually already paid it.
Right.
Then, so you just wanna make sure everything is okay?
No, I'm, I'm not worried about that. I'm, I'm trying to get the, the road fixed. And they won't do, do nothing to repair it. Mr. Stacks there is, uh, helped me several times with it. And they just won't, uh, take care of it.
Just passed, if you want out twenty eight, just pass the, uh.
Frank's Coffee.
Yeah, you pass Frank's Coffee, it's on the left, you go to Split Oak, Split Oak Lane.
Yeah.
You'll burn about, I don't know, a couple thousand feet or so. Take it to the left. And if you keep going up Split Oak Lane, it goes up to the water tower. I talked to Ray about.
By the company's responsibility?
She's not sure. I called and asked her if it was her responsibility or not. And she kinda alluded that they were to maintain the road, but, uh, they need, think ways. I can't recall exactly her words, but my understanding was they need to maintain it in order for them to have access to it. Uh, so I talked to her about John's concerns and she said they would get to it. They have had a lot of water leaks over the summer, plus they've been short on vampire. And she said they would get to it when they could. And I'm guessing they haven't done anything.
No, they have not.
He's, I'm guessing you're, you're here to try to.
Okay, Mark.
Get us to push them to.
I just talked with her the other day.
Right?
Yeah, you don't remember it all?
Yep.
Let me call. I just talked with her last night on the B S D.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, but I called her the other day. Three one eight eight. Three on three three. Yeah, that looks better. Hello, Ray? Hey, how are you? Hey. Well, I'm good. I'm in the middle of a commission meeting and I have a Mr. Downey here, Dowden, Dowden, I'm sorry, from Downey Road. And he was concerned about the road, which I'm sure you're aware of. Okay. Okay, so it's the house above him that's leaving water run down. Correct, to keep the runoff coming down the road. I know, I know you're, you have a lot going on. So, okay. Okay, I tell you what, I'll have Ducks come down one day and he can run up there and take a look and see if, uh, uh, maybe we can get that other property owner to take care of their. Thank, thank you so much for taking my call. He said it's actually a homeowner above you that's leaving water in there. She said they have a cut come across the road to divert the water into the ditch from their, I guess, from their tower. Uh, so.
Mr. Stacks' father, uh, dug a ditch right up there. It's four foot deep. I'm gonna put ripract that. Uh, water company come along, covered over. So, I mean, whatever I do, I, I maintained that road for better than forty years. And since, uh, uh, certain people in the water, uh, community. Yeah, up and did the shaft.
I'll give him a break and we'll go take a look at it.
Okay. Plane, it's not blacktop until they quit the surge in. They brought the surge up to, uh, moving this lane. And they wouldn't come on up the lane with it. But it was never blacktop before.
Okay, they'll take a look at it with the water company and see if there's something that homeowner above will take care of their own water runoff.
There's nobody there except the, uh, female. She, I mean, she babysits. There's nobody there.
Okay, alright, this one, this one lady.
It's a, a lark and he works down Winchester, from what I understand.
Okay.
And, I mean, there's a babysitter comes in there and stays three and four days of, uh, time. I don't know where the mother goes, where she works. Never catch anybody home.
Okay, alright, thank you. Here's your.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, we'll do it. We'll look into it. Alright, thank you, thank you. Thanks for coming out. Well, since we solved all those problems, let's merge it.
We'd like to go back to the Royal Air. Uh, Luke did get back with me about it. He said they did really need to get something approved. Uh, and if we go back and ask for two, you know, so there'd be all new pricing. But he says that whole area is gonna be gutted and he isn't really sure what they're gonna mean. So these folks are only for the upstairs, I think for the downstairs.
The Royal Air doing one outside unit of three heads.
Not three, three. And only in the port area. Then Duckworth is two outside units with two heads, three heads.
One outdoor unit, two heads.
So why can't they?
So it's one outdoor unit with two heads to cover Judge Kern's office and Stacy's and one outdoor unit and one head for the jury room.
My question is, how come they can't add a couple other heads and do the downstairs with that same outside unit?
Yeah, well, I don't know. We can add one later.
Well, that'll charge, it'll be, it'll be an extra fee, of course.
Yeah.
But it would take care of both floors.
Well, if his exterior unit only works two heads.
There was, you can get a.
Twice as opposed to two outdoor units for three heads is what I'm asking.
Uh, the one head is bigger offshore, the one head is big. But.
You're putting two outdoor units and three heads.
I almost need to call him to see if he could add more heads to that one unit.
Duckworth.
Duckworth.
For the downstairs.
Yeah, do you wanna do that?
Cause Duckworth's lower bit, but.
The lower bit, but they'd be adding, hey, where are you going? Have another meeting. We haven't solved all the problems here yet. Don't be there tomorrow. My thinking is why? His bid's under. Now, of course, I know when he adds more heads, the price will go up. But if the two units are big enough to take care of everything we need, even after the construction's done. Why can't we do that? It'd be cheaper, it'd be, it'd be better.
I don't use my number comparing after that.
I know, that's, that's what I'm thinking, the same thing. Okay, let's move on while we're doing it. Okay, discuss approve panic buster, community corrections.
We can't really move one.
Oh, okay. Can you do two things at once?
I used to, but my children would live on it all the time. That would save their life multiple times.
So what's happened?
I don't know. They grew up in plenty and I just got lazy, I guess. I don't know. Um, let's see, so we talked about the current, we thought, um, the panic buttons, several months ago, it's here, we passed the panic buttons for a building. So we started working with the vendor to get a quote. The vendor has since become unresponsive, so I reached out directly to Response Technologies who actually make the buttons. And here are the options. Do y'all have this in your notes?
No, we don't.
Okay. The lowest cost option is seven hundred fifty dollars. Also have to purchase one notification license. This will be a total of one thousand twenty five dollars and they will provide us with phone support to get, uh, it configured. We did test an existing button and it did work in community correction, so this option should be fine. The second option is the same six buttons and one notification license, but it also adds a signal booster just to ensure that there's adequate worry, range for the buttons to activate appropriately. This total is two thousand four hundred twenty five and I do have that quote, which I will pass down. Just to be clear, he's not recommending purchasing a new system right now, but it should be noted that they stopped supporting the current system with parts at the end of last year. A new system will cost around twenty thousand. I think this would be a good item to apply for court security grant sometime in the future. And we talked on the side about this, um, about that booster. Now, they tried the button and it worked fine without the booster, so we're not really sure we need that. But it's gonna be your option.
How much was the six button in there?
The, the low, lowest cost is seven hundred fifty dollars for six buttons and one notification license. The total will be one thousand twenty five for six buttons and a license.
Those fourteen hundred dollars just for the booster.
Most, yeah.
Are they happy with that six buttons? Or what did they think?
Yeah, no, I, that's, that's what they need. Yeah, that was all, yeah, they're happy with that. Then you just need to decide whether you wanna get just the button, the license, or do you wanna actually add the booster?
Uh, if it works without the booster, let's go without the booster.
And I think like, can't you add the booster later if it becomes?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion to go with the lowest cost there, that would worry about all of it. I'll say that too.
Do you wanna see the paperwork?
No, no.
Roger, did you say?
Yes, yes, I did. So that total cost is how much?
Thousand twenty five, right?
One thousand twenty five.
Okay. All right, let's, okay, um, E M B G two thousand twenty two award documents.
Yes, I have that. Um, this is the grant that covered a portion of mine and Luke's salary and a few other miscellaneous things. The total award for twenty twenty two was thirty nine thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and I just need you to sign it very, so I can send it back.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
I'm gonna approve that, give it frozen. Reach it, uh, second, I approve that also. Okay, critical testing software for nine one one.
Um, and nine one one, we're recent, really struggling with hiring people, uh, that we think are gonna be an excellent fit. Unfortunately, they aren't able to perform tasks they are required to do even after we hire them. Uh, there are several counties, uh, around the state that uses testing platform. And Luke has taken to test himself as part of the demo and think it would be beneficial to nine one one. He would like permission to purchase just a one-year subscription utilized for our testing process, see if it helps with our hiring. The total cost is two thousand seven hundred and sixty eight dollars a year, but it gives unlimited testing for the year. And I think he's gonna have all of us at nine one one take the test if we get it. Um, do not have this item budgeted, but there is room in the nine one one budget for it. I really think it's important to try because we are doing, uh, what we are doing is not working. We need to get it right with our people at the center.
So what else is, this is just for software. What else would they need as far as computer? Is it just runoff of a?
Um, I think he wants to set up a computer and a monitor in that small conference room that's off the E S C. Used to be, um, Rachel's office, so we've made it into a small conference room. And he'd like to put that in there so that could specifically be the testing room for hiring and for other things.
Does he have a computer to do that with?
I don't know.
Or is that gonna be something added on?
Probably gonna have to buy a computer, maybe. Not sure.
But they have room in the nine one one budget for it. I'll make a motion, we approve that, I say. Hope it helps. Yeah.
We do have really great people, but unfortunately, there's some things I'm not sure, well, this says you can test for it, but we don't have the capability of just interviewing someone, be like, oh, you have a double ear. You can hear everyone else outside talking and type what you're looking at and taking, it's very difficult. Especially when they're, you're giving CPR and you still have to call for a helicopter and you still have to, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot. So.
Okay. Next slide, smart protect public safety solutions, staffing, analytics, software.
Um.
What is that?
This was already built into nine one's budget. Um, the company advised predictive AI modeling for staffing. We went through a trial with us, the data that we provided is helping and will continue to be more helpful. Wanna try this for a year. I mean, for a full year to see if it truly helps us ensure we have the right numbers of people in seats at the right time. Predictive AI, you know, is the future. We talked a lot about this at the two conferences, though, is that the emergency managers conference and the parks and air conference in AI is like, it's, it's not one away.
We're being taken over.
That, that's probably true. Uh, and that price is just under two thousand per year.
And that's in your budget? Jeez. Pretty pricey, isn't it? Yeah.
What was that amount?
Two thousand a year.
No, it's just under two thousand per year. I do not have a quote for it, but he said it was just under two thousand.
But he had, it's already in the budget.
And he, it, he did have that built into the budget.
Okay, so do we need approval for them?
Yeah.
I mean, the motion, I agree with that. I'm sorry, I'm, okay, I approve it also, long as it's in our budget. Okay, uh, breast cancer awareness day is October the first, twelve o'clock.
All right, I apologize. Um, the Royal Air in Duckworth, he says, I truly don't know about, I'll have to call and ask if you wanted to just hold off onto the next meeting, you can find out, come back with what we need for the next meeting.
Yeah, wait, hold off, then, let's get all this detailed, cause I don't see why buy two units if we can't expand them.
Right. So he has a report. Uh, we paid two hundred dollar deposit to a moving company that was supposed to move the family court judge's bench. They asked for an additional six hundred to cover their travel expenses, even though they did not move the bench. Uh, the manager that called, um, said they are a small company and said they do not have the luxury of sending three guys from Winchester to us and then not receiving anything for it because they do, um, not have the funds to support that. In the folder, it's in my folder, your folder, I'm not sure if you have it or not.
No.
Um. Is, hang on, I lost my way. Uh, the invoices that he sent me requesting payment, that would be up to you all if you wanna pay or not. But I also have in there original quote they sent me and then the second quote they sent me after I reiterated again that this would be a complex move. They added another mover to the quote because of that conversation. You can see both quotes. You can also note that both quotes clearly say, I highlighted relocating judges bench and platform includes disassembly and reassembly. I also added the emails in that I sent, um, him confirming this price was for disassembly and reassembly of the bench and platform. And I've also attached the pictures of the bench that I emailed him. Just wanted you to be aware before you make a decision to pay or not to pay. I didn't wanna, um, send him so you can make a full, fully informed decision. So he has all of that here and I've read through them all and.
Well, my first thought is not to pay.
Yeah, so, I mean, like, you, you had all the information, you made a decision on that, and, and actual information and they got here and said, no, we can't do that. And they were here for like less than an hour.
Right.
So.
I mean, I feel bad that you're following Winchester, but they drove knowing that they were gonna have to move the thing.
Fully aware that they have to disassemble, move and reassemble.
I mean, I'm in favor of not paying. Second. Okay, thank you.
Should we pay? And let's see, we paid a deposit already, two hundred dollar deposit.
We need that back. We should get that back.
I don't disagree.
Okay, thank you. That it?
That is, oh, no, sorry. The frontier letter, did he have that added in there?
No.
I didn't see that.
This is, um, uh, frontier letter of support requesting B E A D application, uh, besides your cash. Doesn't mean this is the only agency that we support, but we, this provides service to those that don't have any other options. Um, and I will send that to you.
Okay.
This is the letter.
And I need to look at my emails, cause I've been waiting on an email from Lauren Trenner.
What's he meaning for that letter? Uh, a letter of support, is that what he's asking?
This is a letter of support. He just wants, if you will sign a letter of support and I'll pass it around.
Well, don't we, didn't we have, uh, aren't we supposed to have a meeting with them?
And then there's a lot of documents.
Yeah, don't we have a meeting with them? I'm not sure.
Uh, Lauren Trenner is sending me a letter. Um, she is writing and she would like to commission support, have them sign the letter. It's, um, a letter thanking the trooper five for responding.
With one.
With blood. And I told her, we, yeah, no doubt sign it, but anyhow, I didn't, I didn't get it again. She wanted to send a letter thanking trooper five, seeing their response, that's what bring blood when they needed it. And she was like.
She's gonna prove that or?
We need much of it.
I guess I moved which one. Okay, thank you. This, with that, uh, Frontier is installing, uh, broadband, uh, right, they're, they're going around the counties with them. They are up to Jordan Run. If you go to Jordan Run, I was up there heading over there Saturday. They must have a mile and a half, two miles of pipe laying out with raw cable and that they're, and I talked to one of the guys who works for them, they, it is coming. It's just, it's taking time. So, I don't know, here's your handful. The state gave them, so there's a, there's a B grant, um, that West Virginia has. And I've been working with another company on this too. Uh, and, but it's supposed to be geared toward getting internet to people that don't have internet. And my concern is from my investigating, is that Frontier and Comcast are trying to get these funds and all they're gonna do is upgrade the service that they already have. They're not, they're not gonna increase service.
Say so, that would give service to people.
Yeah, and that's, that's, the whole idea behind the speed money is to get internet to people that don't have. And, uh, we all have both high-speed, cost-efficient internet to people that don't have it and um, I'm a little concerned about what Frontier and Comcast are doing. So they're putting, they end up.
I can talk a little about it.
Okay, great.
I understand the program and all the rest of that. It's all terrestrial based. I also understand the argument, one point two billion dollars, we can buy everybody a Starlink kit, gun. Uh, it is putting fiber in, amongst other things, the advantage of that long term is you upgrade other types of ancillary equipment. You still have the fiber and all the rest of that, so it's good. I'm not sure on the cost benefit and all the rest of that. Frontier is making good progress. They've had now, at least, as opposed to in the past. They've had some issues with highway department. Uh, we met with the highway. We met down in Charleston. Actually, I met with the Frontier folks specifically and with the Chair of Infrastructure, because the highway department's changed some of their rules with regards to permitting and they've been slow rolling it and all the rest of that. They are putting the fiber to get access to those places that are quote, um, not served. Either underserved or not served at all. Uh, served means a hundred megabits or more. Unless you're like in town here, you're not getting a hun- hundred megabits. Um, if you're already on fiber, maybe you're getting that, but even, even with Starlink, I'm underserved, quote unquote. Um, they are strongly encouraging people to get off of copper if they're on copper. So it not only is, uh, doing the, um, broadband, but also volume and stuff like that as well. So, if you've got some very specific questions, I have a contact that, um, basically is the legislative P O C or Frontier. Um, I know Frontier in the past has deservedly gotten a bad reputation and I've been trying to push them in the direction of doing the right thing. I, I think they're making better progress right now in that regard. We shall see. But if you've got some specifics, I, I can, and I'll research it or maybe even know the answer.
Okay. So the company I've been talking to, they actually, they also run, uh, Alco Net over in Allagay County. And they're wanting to expand over this way and this speed money, it's part was good to use for them. And they could cover a lot more people more efficiently. They use a direct wireless system. Which usually utilizes tires, then you have a, you have a receptor at your, at your house. Uh, they can meet the hundred gigabyte that they're requiring and they can do a lot more cost efficient. Where, and quickly, uh, within a few months, they could have an entire network set up.
Yeah, unfortunately, you, you had a key word in there that's gonna not make it applicable for bead money, wireless.
Well, when I talked to the wireless, to the bead people, they was okay with wireless.
That, that's an incorrect statement. Unfortunately. It's, it's gotta be terrestrial.
Frontier and them will never run up to some of these people that have driveways that are half mile and a half along.
Hey, hey, I am with you. Um, and I have told Kelly, working numerous times, I will take that bet. And they're gonna get a hundred percent of every one of us in West Virginia by twenty twenty nine. I, I said, I'll take that bet. You told me ninety nine point nine percent, you're probably right, but I cannot imagine somebody's gonna run fiber up the Rhode Island for just a house every half a mile.
Yeah. Yeah, that's. And they, they may say they're gonna do it right now when they have a big chunk of money in their pocket, but once they get down towards the end, when they start getting to these other houses, I think they're gonna, oh, well, funds are running out, we don't have enough funds and that's what I'm afraid is gonna happen.
Now, if you want, have the folks, you know, give. Now, if you want, have the folks, you know, give my contact information, I'll get them connected with the, with the broadband office down in Charleston because. Applications for that money and all the rest of that, there is a whole process for that and they've been putting those workbooks out for a year now. So. I mean, they, they should definitely pop through somebody down there, it's not gonna be something with me in this room, we're gonna be able to make a decision to say, hey, yeah, you're the. You're the most logical choice, go for it. That, that's obviously being awarded a economic development.
Okay.
Like, yeah, feel free to give them my contact information.
Alright, well done.
Okay, so you don't have anything else?
West County Awareness Day is October the first, two thousand twenty four, twelve o'clock, Rinald County Courthouse. Speaker will be crying hard, uh, wear your pink ribbon or your pendant. They're gonna be hanging the awareness wreath on the courthouse doors. And this is brought to us by the limestone CEOs club.
Lauren, you have anything? I don't have a work with to do, do we um, first you don't have an administrator for your.
I just gave you that was two hundred dollar thing.
Okay, you guys wanna do your reports and then go ahead and do it. Folks and everything. Are you gonna wait?
Well, if you're a boss, was that? Try towns. Gathering up. A week and a half ago. The fiftieth anniversary, fifth year's gift, I was at the Chatsworth Primary, Primary School with adult therapy program. Uh, I had regenated and I was at the blood bank. And I've been on the phone numerous times with E P and others about this. Hard to deal with.
Well, Ben, that's.
Burnt, burnt, yeah.
Regenated, was that a meeting or signed papers?
Meet, meet.
Meeting.
And I also talked to some of the current Wall Street Fire Department down there, click the bank too about. The issues that they're having, I don't know what, I, I don't know what to do yet.
Okay, we're still meeting in front of.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, Thursday, Thursday, Thursday.
At the fire plant?
Yes, sir. Okay. That it?
Yes, sir. Alright, um, was that the C V B group board meeting? Um. Uh, with the down for I expect there was strong benefit. Uh, who also like the tri towns A M S thing. Uh, was at the therapy dog. Uh, that private middle school.
Sorry, was it primary, middle or?
Primary.
Primary.
It's middle.
I'm used to calling it primary, middle.
Me too.
The senior school.
Yeah.
Can't say change.
And a formerly in protection bureau meeting, middle county planning commission meeting. I was on Zoom for construction progress meeting. Uh, went to the West Virginia port annual meeting.
Yeah, and Dutch was elected to serve on the rispo board for the next three years. Taking very, taking my spot, cause I'm leaving December thirty first, or my last meeting is the seventeenth of December. So that's just taking my spot, so that's good. Please have look where.
And then. Was there yesterday meeting the uh, uh, middle county first applicants?
Okay, I was in Chiaton D M S. I was at the benefit for Jamie Taylor, I should have been at the therapy golf, cause I'm really neat therapy. Um, I was at the rispo meeting and uh. Weston. Uh, my last hospital board meeting was yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
They had a retirement party.
Yeah, they had a.
It was a good call. Um, and I was at Frankfurt T S D meeting last night. That was it.
You know this, I wanted to tell you too. Chatsworth Primary. Chatsworth Middle School, I'm saying, they have got, they've got a band.
Yeah.
Their band is excellent.
I was talking to Mrs. Warwick about that after the program.
Yes.
Told her that I was really, really impressed.
Yeah, I talked to the director of it out there and I know some of them kids attended, they are really good on.
Very good, very.
They are a very good.
The president's cheerleaders too.
Yes, same, I was too, they done a really a good job. I hope it continues.
Do you have any questions? I mean, we are, this.
Could I give a copy of the letter from the prosecutor about?
Sure, Ben.
Time Johnson Mason are just not that quick anymore.
Tell me about it.
I don't know, cause he backed in also chasing one and.
All we have to do is the accounts and so I mean. Uh, we can't adjourn the meeting, but really that's all the business we're doing, it's. That uh. Is that? So you're not interrupting us? You don't knock down?
No.
Before you leave, I wanna ask you. Thank you. So I'm gonna, I've already reached out to somebody's B D.
Is there anything I need for you to talk to? And if I haven't, somebody gets to know.
Hello?
I took them, I took them.
Yeah.
And I scanned them all. I couldn't sell that, it really isn't like.
Think it'll work? Where you see. Yeah. Okay, just, just plan on doing it tomorrow. The, this is not, what's happening? Okay, yes. 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 Yeah, I think we'll have to, at least. I think, uh, well, we're, we have enough stone for that? You figure that in a hundred square feet is okay. Wonder if we shouldn't leave a, see, they pay enough money. Wonder if we should wait till they put the steps in.
Literally disappointed, but.
And uh.
Well, I, I understand.
Yeah.
Getting a proxy is a good.
Yeah. Well, should they be, should they be over to the side next to the garage wall? No.
And I think the best for you people.
No, but I mean, leave a way there so they plant flowers there.
If you. If they're not cooperating.
Yeah, do two or three feet, let's do that, you go ahead and stone up if you wanna leave a space for that.
Alright, well.
Steps.
Leaving that, okay.
Yeah, okay, let's leave, let's leave the stone off.
You guys have a good restaurant, yeah, have fun, have fun, yeah. They're getting into the business season.
I probably put, I probably put three foot in there.
I'm uh working.
That's my.
One thing to another.
Okay. Let's just use a three, let's just use a three foot there, yeah, let's use. Alright, thank you.
I would be there and more than hurt pain. Yes, and that's, I only knows a whole bunch of them. Anyway, they, I'm one, they opened up on their, you know, small, they have sent them down, I have no, you guys, yes. You said that. When he was down there, he said he'd not see any rats or any evidence of rats.
Yeah.
You know, there's. I, I think they're there, until he sees the evidence, he can't do anything about it.
I know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna contact, I matter of fact already contacted, I'll call you later.
I think it was either him or somebody else was telling me that. Other people along there have not seen any rats, she's, she is, they think they're just trying to use that.
Well, I'm sure they are.
I'm sure all, I'm sure they're, I'm sure they are.
Okay, they need to have your assurance.
Thirty nine Melahani.
There it is.
Want that? Is that the Anderson, thirty nine. Lampey. Lanyard.
Yes, originally, yes. And now. Thank you. Two, six, seven, that'll bring you very good. Thank you, sir, sorry you got into all that.
No, that's right, I, I mean, yeah, it's not in my district, but it's an issue that, but it all pays.
See, I talk, anything of it is, you're right, it's not, like you said, it's not isolated to there. Uh, it's everywhere.
And, and, and the one that was registered on the phone, it's two miles to nine, I've got to drive past it multiple times a day. And they have put it up to there, they filled it up and then they just bring more stuff to their house. Yeah, well, I talked to, uh, just to let you know, I spoke with, uh. Back when I first got in, I think it was Williams, was a senator, state senator.
Uh huh.
And he kinda laughed about it, he said, so you want us to pass a law or to where. You can't have a tin can land in yours, and I said, I, I never said nothing about tin, he was an idiot, I graduated with him, but he was an idiot. I tell you that, the, but my thing is. What, why does people, it, it belittles our property, it's a, it, I mean. Name me one good thing about it.
Well, what they're describing sounds like a health and safety.
It's a mess.
Yeah, well, and he's right, there is a daycare down, a couple blocks down the road. Well, I, and the thing of it is, they look at us. We, we really don't have any power to do anything about that.
Interesting, at least.
Well, I was trying to look up the code, but the website's not working well.
It might just be a training. How much?
Hundred dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, hey, thanks for the, the award.
Oh, gosh.
Thanks. I reminded.
Walk out of here without that.
Yeah, thank you so much for that.
Thanks for the peach cider too.
Okay.
It's slowly disappearing.
How are things going in Hampshire County with you?
I think they're okay, and people are calming down. And when Norm gets back to me, he's checking with the next meeting, we'll know about a meet, meet Ken that uh.
Okay.
Uh, uh, he's, he's checking with, I talked to him Friday night again.
The group over in uh Hancher Moak Pack used to be um. Kind of tea party and stuff like that, they had a little bit of something like that, we, you know, this past Friday. I was there, the other delegate for Hancher County was there, uh, guy running for Blair's seat was there. And somebody, Marshall Williams, I guess he used to be in the House of Delegates, he worked for governor, constitution party or something like that. Do you know anything about the Charles um. Johnson that's coming as our prosecuting attorney, do you know anything about him?
Um, a little bit, I mean, I know he works for Rebecca Miller.
Oh, shoot, whatever. I was just curious, I don't know, I don't know him.
Um, I've only interacted with him on one occasion, you know, seemed, seemed pretty smart. Um, actually, it was in part, that was a meeting that we were at that led to the juvenile competency bill that I put in this uh last year. So, you know, there was goodness that came out of that.
So what is your home like?
Well, amongst other things, if you're still recording and transmitting.
I don't know him either.
Well, it's a woman and um lives almost into Hardy County down the uh. Uh, South Branch River Road.
Is she local?
Well, in the sense that she moved here a couple of years ago.
Okay.
But didn't grow up here or anything like that.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know who she is.
She's got a website, um, I will tell you that. She, she's a quote veteran, um, obviously didn't spend a career in, she's a young, younger person. You know, her tagline is, you know, a veteran, a mother and a farmer.
What's her name again?
Amanda Vincent.
Vincent, yeah.
I, I do find it rather ironic that the Farm Bureau endorsed me and not her, so. Kind of maybe telling. Well, hey, I gotta shove off and.
Thank you.
Catch up with the misses.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about you leaving her standing on the rain.
Yeah.
Take care, guys.
See ya. Okay, so don't forget, we'll have to be here a little early the next commission meeting.
We do.
To do the organization.
We set up, how for that we're just. Do we come up with a time for that or?
Till two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Yeah.
It'll be on your agenda. It'll be on your agenda, cause anytime you guys meet.
Well, the problem is, I can't download, for some reason, I can't download the agenda. On my phone.
I've, you, you know, I've turned my phone on. And it's working and I pick it up and try to, and just hit it, bring the screen up and it'll start all over, I don't know what's wrong. My phone's been acting screwy, mine has too.
A lot of. I wanna get this in here.
Okay, I thought you thought you were done.
No, yeah, we're, no, I'm trying to get this in my calendar before I forget, yeah, we're done, we're going to lunch. I know, not yet, we're going to lunch, Lauren, we're already past our limit, stomach's growling.
It's not even eleven o'clock yet.
I know, but I'm just eating lunch earlier. Hey, we're just spending money like it's falling off a tree.
So. This. It's an easy way to get through this.
Slow down. There's no easy way to do it.
There isn't.
I mean, it's impossible to do with line, line for line.
I know.
But it's take forever.
Well.
There's marks on it, so I see somebody goes through.
Somebody does, somebody does it, uh.
But sending, sending goes through and then I double check it.
I think.
Yeah. Do. Scary, isn't it?
Well, I don't, um, there's a couple of things I don't understand. But. Nothing you can do. Now, this is all. Internet's on you. All the first night.
Shop ends and vehicle locators, hot spots and stuff.
Hey, you know what? We were supposed to talk to the sheriff about the letter and when there's, there's four corners of that.
I forgot about that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're sitting up there.
They're sitting up there and Roger's not getting to him, we wanna know if maybe we should take the farming out, somebody else.
Okay, alright.
He was gonna take it to somebody else?
Okay. Good.
I mean, you haven't even paid for two of them yet.
I know, but we had one sit on Rogers for a year.
For a year and a half.
Half, half of the.
He didn't, wonky was gone.
So.
Yeah, I don't know which one.
My, my, we were gonna talk to him, say, you know, would you consider setting up somewhere where we get it done?
Chris got that truck done, they got done quick.
Of course, it's underhead, more. You know, I know Roger's busy and he probably, a lot of times wakes up and doesn't feel like, has to work it on, like, doesn't feel like.
I understand, we, we just, we literally just paid for the other two, they just. They can eat the first week of. The month, I think is when they were.
Well, there's three I'm sitting up for last week.
I still have one more to go.
I think, and, and Mark. I don't, how many times he's come home to trouble, was his, he's got problems with, and I think, I think uh Nick's the same way.
Okay, there's two here, says two thousand twenty five budget has been exceeded for account. Okay, there's two here, says two thousand twenty-five budget has been exceeded for account. Three hundred and one.
What?
Zero zero one, seven hundred.
That's because you guys did a budget revision for the blinds and for the equipment, but it's not reflected in there yet.
Okay.
Because I had to have the state sign home for it before I could reflect it on the budget. That's why I have a budget revision on the next.
Yeah, I can build a law enforcement building.
It's crazy.
courthouse.
Huh?
It's more than the courthouse.
Yeah, no, that's not right. Something's wrong.
Something right there.
No, that's, that's crazy.
We need to talk to Luke, he was supposed to.
Those exterior parking lot lights, I think, are running off the jail. So those would, I mean, I would think. I would think that they'd be energy efficient too and something, but I do know they, there's more amps, don't they?
Should be L A Bs though. I mean, that's, that's your.
For basically an office building.
Well, and it, everything.
Yes.
Is there a way to see what the electric bill? I'm sure we have his record somewhere, what the electric bill was.
Was.
Or we did all the.
I don't know what their numbers were. You know what it was right off? You don't have that memory, you don't have it down in your mind?
One of the seventeen?
Can't believe you don't remember that one.
So let's say what, a year and a half ago?
Yeah.
Hey, it's Lauren, can I talk to Cindy? Is Kim in there? Hey, I need you to pull up the electric bill for the jail. Is there probably about a year and a half?
Since you're here. I know this has nothing to do with you.
Yes.
But we noticed the bill for the new law enforcement building, ridiculous, the electric bill. So we're checking what it was a few years ago.
Okay, can we adjourn this meeting? We have. Can we adjourn?
Yeah, we have a motion on the bills and it's.
Yeah, I have a motion to. Pay accounts.
And purchase orders.
And purchase orders.
Have a motion for exoneration of estates.
Yeah, yes. Roger and Dutch for the exoneration.
Yeah, and for the estates.
Yes.
About a year and a half, years ago, for destruction.
Okay. Waiting to adjourn. He's charging it. I did.
Oh, Jerry.
I made the earnings to the air, I'm second. Yeah. I'm just trying.
I, I think I keep seeing it, it's up here.
Yeah, there it is.
It jumps, it jumps on me.
Yeah.
We need a touchscreen TV. Touch it off.
That guy in the center's gonna have to start getting the two, wearing the toupee. I'm telling you, I, I, I checked your walkover and that light shirt when he got up.
Like a.